I'm going to call the meeting for the county commissioners for October 25th to order. There is one announcement that this meeting is being video and audio recorded. Is there any public comment to come before the county commissioners tonight? Any new business from the board? Hearing none, we have approval of minutes warrants and pending contracts. We have minutes and payroll and treasury warrants. May I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any commissioners reports or comments? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll call the October 25th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. I don't believe that there are any changes to the agenda, so we'll accept that by unanimous consent and move on to announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This meeting is being audio and video recorded as well. The Nantucket Harbor, Shimo and Plus Sewer Extension Project work. Our sewer director, David Gray, is going to give us a weekly brief update on where we are with the project and where we're going next.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. The Shimo project's moving along quite nicely. McLean Lane and Tashman Lane, all the mains are completed and all the laterals have also been installed. With some temporary paving has been done up to date. They're going to be doing a lot more paving as soon as the weather breaks in that area for the temporary paving. But it's been quite successful over there. The next step in those areas will be to do the inverts and all the manholes and to put in all the structures before the final paving gets done. We're hoping to have that whole area paved by the time the plant gets ready to close, hopefully sometime in the middle of December, the way things are going. We've been doing paving every Thursday and Friday on the Besper Lane area. They've been prepping the trenches and having it paved for the weekends. Today, they installed a crossover pipe at the drainage area by number 22 where this constantly flooding. So they installed a new drainage line today, so there is an open trench there tonight. It's not open, but there's a trench there that will be paved tomorrow, weather permitting, if not Friday morning. The C Street project is going along very nicely. We will be installing the bypass piping and all the valves and everything on Friday and Saturday of this week. We've got some work to do in the street, then most everything else is in the yard down there. The bypass pumps are actually coming in on Tuesday for that whole bypass system, and we anticipate going online within the next two weeks with full bypass, so they can start the heavy construction down there. National Grid has been hired at it with a lot of the conduit work for the project. The Wama Squid Pump Station, most of all the conduits have been completed down there. They have to take and pull their lines now and do some hookups. The Montemoye project is moving along, and the Surf Site Construction Project's progressing very well, so we've been very busy. We have been doing some storm drain cleaning in the project areas, and the drastic one that we did over the last couple of days prior to this storm was on the Friendship Lane area because of the sewer maintenance coming down through there. And I just came through there a few minutes ago, and you can't call it a pond anymore, it's more of a large puddle. So the cleaning in McLean, Tashman and Friendship have now been done. We'll be moving into the Meadowview area shortly in preparation of the construction. Thank you. Any questions?
Just a comment. I happened to be in the boat last week with your outside inspector for the project of the wastewater treatment plant, and he had nothing but, he has 30 years' experience as an operator, and he had nothing but high praise for your operation and the project itself, and said we were in a great place, so I just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
That's good feedback. Thank you very much. And also, as a little tiny public service announcement in response to the Catch Basin cleaning, these are all private roads, and the town is not going to be maintaining these areas going forward, so maybe people should remember about that. We have a public forum tomorrow regarding recreational marijuana and retail use of marijuana pursuant to the statewide referendum approved about a year ago in Massachusetts last November. It's tomorrow, again, October 26th, 4:30 to 6:30 here in this room. We have a panel of a couple of selectmen and some others, and hopefully we'll get a good amount of public attendance, and I think, as the board has said several times, we're really looking for some good public input on how people view the new law and what they'd like to see here locally. We also have an information session regarding the Six Fairgrounds Road Housing Project, which will be held Monday, October 30th, in this room at 5:30. And we're hoping to just provide people with information, answer questions, and get hopefully some concerns addressed. The DPW is sponsoring a landfill groundwater monitoring forum on Thursday, November 9th, at 6:30, again, in this room, and there's a public notice that's going in the paper about this, and we're doing some public outreach about it. The Children's Beach Boat Ramp will be closed from October 31st through January 15th for repairs. The 2018 Annual Town Meeting Warrant is currently open for citizen warrant article submittals until November 20th at 4:00 p.m. I don't know that we've gotten any warrant articles yet, but I'm sure we will. And of course, hopefully, everybody knows, we have a special town meeting which starts on Monday, November 6th, at the high school. If you are not already a registered voter, the voter registration deadline to vote at that special town meeting is this Friday, October 27th, at 8:00 p.m. We also have a special election pursuant to one of the warrant articles at the special town meeting on November 28th at the high school from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That's it.
Okay, that brings us to the public comment portion of the agenda. If there's anyone here wishing to speak about something that's not otherwise on the agenda, now would be the time.
Dave Fredericks, I just, I listen to David Gray, and I have to tell a story, and I may look at me like I'm crazy for telling this story, but we talk about him doing a good job, we talk about all the work that's going on. So I'm, as people know, building houses with my kids, and we had about probably a month ago the need to get a sewer done on a Saturday. That was the day somebody loaned me their equipment, and I happened to say to Dave, "I really have to figure out, how do I get an inspection on a Saturday?" And in between everything else he was doing, he took the time on a Saturday to come by and sign off on it. And it's just, that's not a big deal unless you're the person that needs to work on a Saturday and needs to get it done. And he did it without any thought. He just stopped by as casual as he could, took care of it and moved on. So we talk about the big things. It's just worth pointing out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Hearing no other public comment. I don't believe that there's any new business. Approval of minutes warrants pending contracts?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll warrants and treasury warrants?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of pending contracts? Were there any questions on the contracts?
I just had one question. On the two different salt mixes. It looked like they were two different prices per ton. I just didn't know if they were. Just curious why.
I think they were just two different prices from two different vendors, but I don't know if the deputy DPW director knows.
I don't have any information.
We can find out and get back to you. Oh, does Brian know?
It's like two different companies.
It's part of a larger bid through Plymouth County, and so we picked the two low bidders so that we have availability of salt, and the second low bidder was at 221. The idea would be obviously to utilize the first, the mid-stage salt for the majority of it unless we're in an emergency.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
And a couple of years ago, we were scrambling for salt, if I remember correctly, and Bobby reminded us every day, so.
So it's better to have two vendors and...
Better to have it for that price than not having it all.
Right. Okay.
Motion?
So moved. To move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Citizen departmental requests? We have requests from the Nantucket Hotel that we've gotten a number of years.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. A number of consent items. I believe Eleanor's here, if anybody has any questions. Otherwise...
Make a motion to approve the consent items.
Okay. Yes.
Okay.
Eric had mentioned that you all would prefer narrative staff report. I often end up doing these. I did the last one in chart format, and she said it was sort of redundant because it's kind of what she does, although I added some elements like zoning, you know, ground cover, eligible ground cover and that sort of thing. I thought it would be helpful and quick for you to use, but I did prepare something this morning. I didn't send it to her because I didn't want to inundate her at the last minute. I hate it when people do that to me. I have a little staff report if you want to hear. It's narrative, but I just really wanted to know if you would prefer that, or do you like the chart, or would you like both?
I thought the chart was great, personally.
Just wanted it to be helpful and, you know, user-friendly. There's a lot of information in there, so maybe it's busy for some people who work with it.
My point is, I want to make sure that it's, you know, the chart is great. I want to make sure that we have a record of what we've done and why we've done it, so that we want to look back later, because I've had a couple in my early years that I wouldn't have done if I had known the actual details.
Right.
You know, I want to be able to have a document of it and go, "Okay, you know, we understood that. We knew it was subdivisible. We knew it was whatever the deal was."
Right. So like up there, you don't have, for instance, the ATM articles. I couldn't fit another column in there.
No.
But I have that in, and first of all, that's in your agenda, but I have it in the staff report. I make mention of that. I make mention of, you know, for instance, they get another 20 feet in terms of setbacks, they get another X number of square feet in terms of, and a lot of these do have pedestrian easements. We're very, very careful. I work with Andrew. Go into the Google Earth and not, we don't just depend on the GIS because that's obsolete, to make sure that there's not some path that needs to be reserved for whether it's beach access or anything like that. So we're very, very careful about that, and I inform people, you know, the property owners who are going to be acquiring these parcels, that that's a likelihood. The release of easement for V, that is in his properties, so there's no consideration for that. We've done a couple of those, and those streets haven't been on the ground for really usable forever, as long as we know. But if you have any questions, and I'm happy to do a narrative format as well, but this is just, I kind of have all this information, and I can pretty succinctly put it in that format, so if that suits you.
Well, we have a motion on the consent, so why don't we, I'll take that motion, then maybe you can give the narrative during the public hearings.
Okay.
Okay.
As you like.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So then we will move on to the public hearing portion. Do you want to go over number one?
Yeah, I don't have a lot to say about this, to be honest. These are, these three particular parcels, they're destined for yard sale conveyances to other parties at some time in the future. They're all substandard in size, so they would probably have to be merged with adjacent lots. There are lots of records, so if they were buildable at all, which would be unlikely given the zoning for each lot, you know, and septic considerations, those all have to be taken into consideration. But they will be sold at some time in the future. The proposed action here is really to establish clean and clear title because there were takings in the past dating back to the '70s and subsequent takings and so forth, and there was foreclosures, but we're really just trying to clean it up because those actions weren't somehow valid enough to clean the title and put it in the name of the town. So that's really what this is about.
Okay. And that applies to 1A, B and C, are you referring to?
Correct. And these all have been vetted and approved by the Real Estate Assessment Committee back in, I believe, August.
Okay. Okay. This is a public hearing. If anyone's wishing to comment. Hearing no comments, we'll close the public hearing. It's a pleasure.
Can I have just a question? Will you pull up 35, H35? The one I had on Berkeley Street, it's Lug 3 zoning, 3 acre zoning. Yeah. Yeah, Berkeley. Is that it? Yeah. It's, every other lot, if you look in that neighborhood, every other lot around it is about a quarter acre lot.
Yeah, they're a lot of 10,000.
Yeah, there's a couple that are, you know, third acre, et cetera.
Yeah.
So that's a particular lot that if an individual owned it, they would develop it. They would put a house on it. They would do something with it.
They could ostensibly do something with it. I mean, it's a lot of record. It's been, you know, those are like a bunch of, you know how it is with Tom Nevers, just all those little blocks and lots and blocks and so forth, but because that's been one parcel since pre-zoning, it is considered a lot of record. So somebody could develop it, but it's only got 10,000 square feet and 18, 10,018.
It could have a one-bedroom septic.
Yeah, so you don't have a...
It could have a one or two-bedroom, but the question though, so the question I have in a way is, you know, we have a shortage of affordable housing. Here's a neighborhood that exists, which it's completely in keeping in that neighborhood, you know, should that be one of the considerations? And if it should, who is making that decision along the path?
I know that the Planning Department, and Andrew in particular, as you know, very, very devoted to, you know, he's a big proponent of affordable housing, and there's already, I mean, I can tell you, I won't tell you where, but there's someone out in that very neighborhood who wants to do an affordable housing, a mini 40B, mini, mini, mini. I mean, it's really basically going to be one unit. I don't know where that's going to end up, but it's in that particular neighborhood in a very similar lot situation. But that certainly could be something that comes up, and you can absolutely, I can bring it to Andrew's attention, that that's something that if the board wants us to kind of focus on that.
Well, I want to make sure that all opportunities have been vetted.
Right.
And that the town, your town is having less and less land available. I want to make sure that we're using it to our best advantage. If we could put a one or two-bedroom house and house a department head in a nice neighborhood...
Right.
That would be a great thing for the town. I understand that the neighbors are going to want to buy it and build a second dwelling or add it to their property. I want to make sure that the yard sale program is balanced in looking at the common good for all of us as well as the neighborhood good.
Well, there's two things there. If the neighbor wanted to buy it, they would be lessening their non-conforming lot status. Neither of those people would become conforming as to Lug 3, but it would lessen the nonconformity. And then ostensibly, the town could utilize the money they'd get for a market rate situation to create and put it into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so that's another option down the road.
It is, but...
Rather than putting somebody away on Tom Nevers who may not have transportation or, you know...
You could say that, but, and this is, these are the, and this, what the conversation we're having, which is a positive one, is the conversation I want to be assured is happening at that level, because we've set a price...
Right.
Based on square feet. So, you know, the square foot price, we might get $25,000 for that, you know, some number.
Yeah, I don't know. I actually don't, can't answer.
I understand. I could do the math, but I'm not going to do it right now.
And I also don't know how that ends up working out in terms of what the asking price is going to be. I don't, I...
Well, the asking price is set by square feet.
Right.
And so if, you know, so we could multiply the square feet by a quarter acre and figure out what the price will be.
Right.
And I would ask, is that really the true value in this case?
Right.
Because it's a potentially buildable lot, you know? And so all I'm saying is, I want to, I'm very happy to convey, you know, to do...
Right. Well, this is just the taking. Right.
Yeah, so we can all do that, and I'm bringing this one up in particular so that if the board has this again, they will pull the map up and they will have this discussion, and maybe they won't convey it. You know, part of the problem sometimes, though, is the neighbors have paid for some of this, and so they have an expectation. So by the time it gets to us, if this hasn't been vetted, the neighbors have an expectation that they're going to get this lot for, pick a number, $25,000.
Right.
And all of a sudden, we go, "No, we want a department head to have an opportunity to live on Nantucket."
Well, Andrew will probably have a very good response for you and be able to tell you exactly what you need to hear and want to hear, but I frankly don't know the answer to those questions, but I'm certainly going to bring it to his attention.
No, I know.
Do you want to pull this out? This one item out?
I'm happy with step one.
This is just the taking, so all of that can be worked out.
Okay.
But it's a good opportunity...
Absolutely.
To put it on the screen and show everybody what we're doing...
Right.
And make sure that we've got it under control, so.
Right. Well, I certainly know that that's on the table for Andrew, that particular mission.
That should be on this one, for sure.
So we'd like to have, you want to, we'd like to have a comeback to this board.
Well, it's going to come back.
We'll do the taking. It has to come back for the disposition.
Any disposition would have to undergo the same sort of review.
I understand, but this disposition isn't only for yard sale. We have a prerogative to sell it at a market rate.
But this isn't disposition. This is just acquisition. So we're just putting it clean and clear title in the name of the town, and what happens after that is a completely different matter. So it would come back to you unanimously.
I think the direction is to not go too far down the path of working something out within a butter.
Right, or planning out an RFP for, right.
Might be interest in the town, to the town in keeping it or giving it to an affordable housing organization or something along those lines.
Well, I will certainly, if Andrew isn't listening live, and, you know, I will certainly convey this to him.
Okay.
Yeah, if you look at our consent items, a 2,000 square foot lot is $2,500. A 48, $4,800 square foot sold for $4,800. So you can assume a 25...
Well, those are paper road parcels. I will... It's a little different with land, developable land.
Also, say, in this area, the wells are another pretty large constraint, so you would really actually have to investigate a little bit further whether you can put a septic system on it, because there's the groundwater flow and the well radiuses, and they take up a lot of space.
Madam Chairman, also typically, one of the next steps here would be for Andrew to come to the board with recommendations on what the minimum prices ought to be, which is typically a discussion held in his executive session and then comes back to open at a later time, so when that happens, there could certainly be a discussion at that time.
Well, but we don't just, we don't, sorry.
I think we've heard from a couple of people, a cautionary note about having the butters incur expense that would lead people to believe that they had the right to purchase that. So I think we want to send that message to the Planning Department.
Okay.
That's sort of what I'm saying. On this lot, we didn't, they don't come to us in executive session for all the other prev, the ones we just did on consent, didn't come to us. They had a, it's the right thing, and we did it, but all I'm saying is, a lot like this, where all the lots are the same size, and it could be potentially, you don't want to sell it for $25,000, maybe if it could be someone's house. That's all.
And I think applying what you're saying on a broader scale, not just this one, but having that maybe be part of when the Real Estate Committee even, or whomever is looking at each parcel if it's buildable for us.
Right.
I like it.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A, B and C. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First, we have an update on our Island Home Facility improvements. There is a memo in your packet.
She just stepped out.
Okay. Rachel is here, the Human Services Director. She stepped out for a moment. She'll be back in momentarily. The memo in your packet discusses some recent procurement action with the improvements that have been discussed over the last few months since town meeting, and I think that what's happened is the bids have come in at a number higher than the appropriation, so there may be a need to seek additional funds.
Good evening. So this memo before you kind of outlines our current status with the projects that we already had funded. We had the resident room furniture closets and the actual furniture upgrades. We had about $200,000 for that, and we anticipated a certain amount for each closet. There are 24 in total, and the bid that came in, we only got one bid out of eight solicited quotes because we anticipated it coming under $50,000, and the only one that came in was California Closets for approximately $130,000. What we are now going to try and look at doing is seeing if we can do this in-house, and then the materials would be the only purchase that we would have, and we would have our two maintenance individuals repair and remove the current closets and fix them. We're working on something right now to estimate that out. If that does not work, I will have to put a bid together, and we will go forward with that. Boiler and heating system that is just in there, it is an ongoing project that has been completed. There is a very small punch list that is being done on, I believe tomorrow will be the last day that they will be onsite. So we now have, the HVAC units are up and running very well. So the remaining projects that we had put in for and had approved for, we had about $915,000 for the budget, and we ended up enclosing all of these into one bid rather than doing a bunch of separate bids. We anticipated, one, the extra bids and the cost of that, and then, two, the people who would probably be able and eligible to bid on these would probably want to do them simultaneously. A lot of the work, for instance, the tile work in the kitchen would also be related to the tile work in the bathroom upgrades, so it made sense to combine them for the sub-bids and for the general contractor. There were a few things that we added after the fact, and a lot of that had to do with the $200,000 that we asked for for overall facility upgrades to meet code. So the electrical panel, for instance, was one of those things to enclose it so it's not exposed. We had to recreate the beauty salon space, and the in-room resident bathroom upgrades was not part of the original anticipated proposal when we brought it to Capitol Committee, but this is for the in-wall holders, for the toilets. Many of them are a little unstable, and the last thing we need is for anybody to be injured using their own resident bathroom. So we put this out to bid, and after a few addendums and some delays, the bid was opened on October 9th. The only bid that was responding was Northern Contracting Corp., and they came in at $1,391,000. We had a few projects, or I'm sorry, a few items that were purchased already based on the anticipated capital programming. So we had purchased laundry equipment, which was part of the kitchen laundry upgrades, and we purchased all new kitchen equipment, and we purchased a new tub for the bathroom as part of the upgrades. So all that money was already deducted from the $915,000 budget. One thing we never also anticipated was the cost for the architect and the work for the BH approval, as well as the project manager in-house to manage this. So overall, based on prior expenses and what we had left in the budget, we only had about $720,000 for this bid, and it came in at 1.3. So it was a little bit more than $600,000 over. So because of this, we've had to reevaluate with the architect and a few other volunteers, as well as Dave Fredericks, who's on our Building Committee, to help look at what we had planned and what we need to prioritize so that we know what we have funding for and what we have to do right now, and what maybe we can come back and ask at annual town meeting in 2018 for the remaining funding. So those projects would be the makeup air in the kitchen because to create a better air quality in there. The east shower, we would push off the west shower until we received additional funding, as well as the in-room bathroom upgrades, and then the tile work in the kitchen and the electrical panel. That is a regulation code, and that was something that we also prioritized. We also had a meeting with the Department of Public Health on August 8th, which had, we anticipated roughly the $750,000 to $800,000 for this bid. Obviously, that came in much more than we anticipated, and at that time, we received some valuable feedback on the project that we were putting together, and we also received some information that if we put about $200,000 to $300,000 more into the building within a certain period of time, we would be triggering the determination of need process. What we now understand is by asking for more funding in annual town meeting 2018, as well as the rebid, we will be triggering likely that process. One thing that I do need to try and evaluate is to get a confirmation on that, so we will be working with the architect to see if we can go and have another informal meeting with them and have a better discussion with them with more concrete facts to be sure that that is actual, rather than basing that on a prior conversation that we might not have in writing.
And what does the determination of need process, what does that trigger? What does that mean?
It's a very, very large application. Usually, you have to do it if you're doing a full renovation of a facility or if you're doing a complete new facility. So the hospital, for instance, had their own determination of need application that they had to file when they were renovating and rebuilding their hospital. Usually, you only do it for very major capital expenditures.
Is it like coming up to a minimum on your house and everything then has to come up to code? Is it that similar?
Ultimately, yes, yes. They'll want to evaluate bed size, they'll want to look at, you know, our financials, they'll want to look at our anticipated expenditures in the future, our anticipated revenues. It's a very financially driven application, but it's what has to be done if we trigger the capital process. We also unfortunately will probably have to ask for a little bit more additional funding in terms of just maintenance-related stuff for these projects, for the architect, for instance. Now that we're asking them to redo the bid, we will have an additional addendum to their contract because this was not an anticipated expense. Other than that, are there any immediate questions?
The DON is put off, conversation is put off until you come back at annual town meeting and ask for the incremental dollars, is what I hear you saying. Because you're going to spend, try to spend the 700 or so now on your highest priority.
Yes, we're going to rebid those projects now and spend that now.
And then, and then understand, you know, come back for more funding. And I think that's fine. There's different levels of DON review. The level of intensity of it for a complete renovation, a complete replacement is different than a renovation like this, but it is, you know, it's a heavy lift. And just on the, my comment on the, on the patient closets or resident closets, you know, we've got, you've got two, and this is getting into your business, but you've got two maintenance people and you've got a, you've got a building that's in terrible shape, and I would be concerned about taking them off of the work they're doing now and working, doing in-house anything like the closets. And I would, whether it's 130 or whatever, I just put it into the dollars you ask for for, you know, at annual town meeting personally, but that's, you know, it's your call.
We did have an internal conversation, and our maintenance supervisor did suggest that maybe he could do it in-house and wanted to put something together, but I can certainly reiterate that because it might be something that maybe he can help manage a contract and have somebody else do, rather than do it in-house. And like you said, take them away for other, from other duties that they're doing.
Do you have questions?
So, what I'm trying to get a handle on is, you go for the appropriation at annual for more money, but you know that this determination of need is going to be a part of that because we would have spent too much money within.
Our understanding, based on the conversation that we had with Daniel at DPH, yes, but that is an assumption at this point, only because it was a back-and-forth conversation outside of the project, and I would rather go back and have it as a more concrete conversation, to be sure.
So, that's kind of what I'm getting at is, can we get something more concrete for them in terms of what other items might be triggered so that we could actually go to town meeting with a proposal? What I'm afraid is going to happen is that we'll go for more money. It will trigger this determination of need. Once they review everything, they'll say, you need to do these other 15 things, and that's going to cost more money, and then we don't have it.
Right.
Is there any way to get a better handle on?
Well, you could complete the DON application now. You don't have to wait.
We can certainly, the application, it will take significant amount of time, so we can certainly start it. As we have, Rebecca Casey is with SMRT, and she's been the individual that's been helping me and talking to DPH with me and doing all the approval processes. So we have reached out to him again to ask for a meeting with him and anybody, and somebody from the determination of need division, so that we can have that meeting with them. We do, we just don't have a date yet, but we can certainly start the process. Last time we went in-depth with them, we did have a meeting with the same individuals, and they gave us a very strong overview of the determination of need process. And I have a binder and everything that relates to it and all the divisions that I need. The problem is they just changed the regulations in January, so this meeting will have to take place regardless to get a better understanding of the nursing home determination of need, that, how the regulations have changed. So what I have is slightly outdated.
And we had conversations with them when we were going for a replacement facility, trying to get, basically, we said, if we go to, if we go through all this work, are you still going to approve it? And without saying yes, they came pretty, as close as they could, so, because there are no alternatives.
Yeah, they're very strict on, unless we actually submit something, any plans, any application, anything, they will not give us anything in writing. It's a very informal conversation, which will be what this is until we actually submit something.
Good question on the determination of need. I see that it's, one of the negatives is a ton of more work, right, huge application. But what are the negatives of us, if they say, you have to do these 15 more things, we know we already need those things. Why is that a bad thing? Or is it, what's the negatives outside of extra work for the determination of need? What's the risk? I just, I don't see that.
Is there a chance, like, rooms would, we would lose beds?
I can't say.
This is all hypothetical, and we don't really, until you do the application, you don't.
Why are we trying to avoid a determination of need? I guess is what I'm.
We're not.
It's not necessarily avoidance, certainly from my personal opinion. It's just so that you're aware that this would have to occur.
Yeah, okay.
So, in some conversations that I've had is, is it worth doing the process for this? Like Mr. Kelly said, maybe there are different levels, so it might not be intense or as intense if it's just a regular construction. Or is it the exact same thing unless we're doing a full-blown renovation? So there's just an understanding there that should we go for this couple-million-dollar amount, or is this something that, it's just an understanding that this process will have to happen. And they could come back and say, in terms of bed size, in terms of our financials, in terms of what our building needs or doesn't need. So it's just to make you aware that we might have to do this process, and there might be a response from them that directs that.
I think Rita had a question.
Just a couple of quick questions. One, the determination of need, is it within a year? So if we, if we only do a portion of it now, is there a certain timeframe then when we can go for the rest of it?
Yeah, that is one of the things that we need to get more concrete, because I was told it's consecutive spending over the course of a few years, but in the regulation, it doesn't outline any type of timeframe, or it just has a dollar amount. But it doesn't say two years in the, in the regulation. So that was something, but the response that we got was, okay, you're doing this. If you put in another X number of dollars next year on building-related things, and it's not just any, like if it's vans or an awning in the front, or there's certain things that qualify and certain things that don't, so it's not any capital spending, then it was just, just so you're aware, you'll likely trigger the DON process. So it's, we need a better understanding of what those eligible items are. Are there anything in this bid that is not included, so maybe we're not looking at 1.4 million dollars? And what other things, and how long is, what is the rolling period?
And that meeting that you're going to have will be clarifying a lot.
And oftentimes, they're very willing to work with you, they're very understanding if we ask for a waiver in some way and, and anything. I don't know if that's an option. I know that you do have an option of providing for waivers for certain regulations, like room sizes, bed sizes, things like that. So this could be also a conversation we could have with them to ask, is it possible to waive this for this period and then anything further from there? I don't know that, I'm just saying it could be a conversation we could have with them.
Okay.
And I'm, I don't, I'm happy to help. I had my contacts up there are within the acute care division. I don't know the long-term care folks, but if I can be of help, I'd be happy to do anything I can.
Great, thank you.
One more question, does it make any difference who funds it?
No.
It's just the total amount spent?
Mm-hmm.
So if we did a GoFundMe page for 600,000 from donations, it wouldn't matter?
No.
It's still money, okay.
But when you file it, you have to have, they have to have a certain confidence that you have the funding.
Right.
So you have to have X percent in the bank kind of thing, or whatever.
I have a couple more questions. Is it common to only get one bid? And I was also wondering how disruptive the work that has gone on to date is for everyone, and how much more disruptive the anticipated renovations would be.
I can't speak towards only one bid. I would defer that to Ryan in finance and procurement. My understanding is it's, usually you probably get about two or three, but I'm not usually involved in this level of bid responses. In terms of the disruption, we did, we removed all the carpet, we redid the living room flooring, and we redid the nursing station, which are very minor renovations, in my personal opinion, and it was quite disruptive. It only lasted a few days. We also had to shut down our kitchen for two days when we redid the flooring in there, as well as the flooring in the dining room. We were able to utilize other resources in the community to provide the food and, you know, cooked outside, like, we managed. But this, especially the shower room, for instance, is going to be much more than a couple days, and that is the most utilized shower and space that we have right now for residents in terms of bathing. So it will be in impact on that part of their daily living, as well as the noise, the sounds, the dust, the, I mean, obviously, we're going to ask them to keep it as clean as possible, but there will be a significant amount of disruption, just based on the noise. Individuals with certain levels of dementia or any type of mental status or any type of behavioral issues, usually these type of things confuse them more. It causes them to act out, so to speak, a little bit more, and it creates a huge disruption in their lives. It's not to say it can't be done, but that is a human impact to what these projects would be.
Any other questions? All my questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
This is, and what's, what's happening now is what Rick Atherton sort of kept warning us about and why he wanted, he pushed so hard for the town meeting article, because we're just throwing money after money after money.
Death by a thousand cuts.
Yeah, I mean, and he was, you know, it's proving that he was, he's 100% right. You know, it's just too bad that we didn't do what we should have done last town meeting.
On that note, I do have a question as to, again, I suppose being the least experienced on this topic. Why was there a revote in January? Was it because of a death by a thousand cuts, or what, where was, why was that decision made from the January 11th meeting to the January 18th? To go from not putting it on the warrant to putting it on? Was there, what was the reasoning behind that?
Dawn came back. That was, I remember you were away, I think it was, you were away and then came back, and I think convinced the board, wasn't that?
No.
That's a different one.
It was the other way around, actually.
You left.
I was, no, I was here for the first vote, and Jim wasn't here.
Oh, okay. I'm thinking of something else.
And then everyone was here for the second vote?
Yes.
And what was the thinking behind it, though? Or Jimmy must have been pretty certain or felt passionately about it?
In the meantime, after the vote was taken, first of all, we didn't have a full board for the first vote, and we did for the second vote. And in the meantime, we had some information about some significant quality issues that, from my perspective, put a time, you know, it made it, made the, make, made the action required a more timely response.
So it was about meeting deadlines and sort of?
No, it was.
It was more?
The first approach, in my thinking, when we voted to put it off to the annual, was the, am I thinking of this correctly?
Was to not put on the annual.
Was to, was to not, not put it on the annual so that we could acquire the property first and do more outreach about the entire plan.
Okay.
And then there were concerns that we weren't moving, moving things along fast enough, and it was time to get a vote.
Okay.
One way or the other. Unfortunately, we didn't acquire the property or get the facility approved.
But it was, you know, but there was an incredible effort on the part of the team to get out the vote, if you will, meeting with, you know, many, many numbers of boards and, so it was, and, you know, the, the building committee did a nice, very nice job, and we had it, we had all the facts explained, but the vote went a different direction. It's hard to know of how much of that was, you know, we could speculate on the reasons, but.
Yeah, it just seems like the concern was death by a thousand cuts, and it was rushed, and now it's, it's death by a couple different ways, potentially.
I guess I don't agree with the, it was rushed. I think we had, we did a great job making the case for, you know, at the, at the, at the town meeting, so.
I think the general response, and I, although I have the least experience from this side of it, as a general member of the public and having gone to quite a few of the different meetings, being fairly unbiased, is that I do feel like, although there's a lot of effort put in, that the major questions were not answered sufficiently, and I think that's where a lot of the no vote came, so despite best efforts. And I don't see that there's a whole lot of clarity after that vote. I think there could have been advantages to understanding where the voters stood, but I feel like there's.
What were the, what were some of the, the things that were unclear in your, in your mind from what you've heard?
I think that there wasn't definitive or defensible reasonings behind the model, the location. I think the three biggest were the model, the location, and the financials. I think on the sort of periphery, there was a concern about the, whether all the stakeholders had been appropriately, their opinions had been taken into account, whether the demographic survey that we had done was up to date and that we were really building for who, or we knew who we were building for. But I think the three biggest are the, the, the location, the model, and the financials. And I didn't see.
There's a voluminous amount of, you know, documents and reports when we, and, you know, many of us had, the small house model was a very new, was a new model, new to me. And it was the preponderance of evidence through both our consultants and site visits we took that that was the right model. And, and we had, we, you know, we really, and the model we came up with was, was not the off-the-shelf model, it was the Nantucket model. And the location, that was, I mean, we spent, you know, well, you know, we looked at several different sites, went even down the path of doing, you know, a lot of surveys, and that was the consensus of the board to acquire that property, so.
And I think.
And then the financials, we showed that with the small house model, in the configuration, that, that it would never break even, but it, but the losses, and don't quote me, but the losses came down to about $300,000 a year, so it was a huge improvement in the financials.
So do you think failing to get the vote despite all that work and despite the effort and despite, I think, a lot of those make a lot of sense that it's finished? Because I think there was a lot of work and a lot of thought and years.
I think that's, that's really up to this board if we want to bring that whole concept back. I mean, I, you know, that's, that's really up to Dawn and Matt to see if they want to bring that conversation back to this board. That's not up to me.
I think that beyond what we're talking about tonight, we do need to have further discussion on this. I'm not sure that bringing back the entire original proposal for a new facility in the location adjacent to Sherburne Commons is viable anymore. And I don't know that even, that if we had waited for the next town meeting, that it, I still, I highly doubt that it would have passed, because there were too many competing concerns.
You have neighbors that don't want it in the neighborhood, you have some people who didn't want it to leave from the harbor, there's some people who said that we were trying to close it. So you have two or three or four strong groups, you'd have to pick off one or two of them, you know, and some people don't look at the numbers, some people don't look at the, those types of issues. And so for some people, it's a very emotional issue, and so.
People were afraid that we were going to give the existing land to the land bank, and, I mean, it's just, there were so many different dynamics, and so.
And it just seems like none, like you said, none of those, those were sufficiently picked off, so, and that's why today, we still don't know why or what the percentage of no's were, where they're coming from. And I think it's, it's one of those, it's, we're leaning towards death by inaction or we're putting residents through a lot of discomfort, which, death by a thousand cuts, it's still the same outcome, so.
If the board would entertain bringing it back, finding another location, if that's something the board wants to discuss, then that could be brought forward as an agenda item. We certainly have, you know, all the information, we just don't have a place to build it.
And we have certainly looked into alternate locations that have not, not worked out as options.
We looked at Wires Valley, so.
And the other elephant in the room is even if we, even if money was not an issue and we could do it at this point, the other question is, are we capable of staffing and managing an operation? And that's a really difficult, you know, we're having people retiring, which we've been, Liberty's been trying to hire for how many years? Two or three years? You know, so we have to, you know, it's going to be a really difficult conversation because, you know, there are some uncomfortable, you know, topics that we have to tackle. I mean, I just, there's a question of, are we capable of doing this? And right now, I, right now, we're not proving ourselves capable of doing it, in my opinion. And so what do we have to change to become capable? You know, what are the changes that we have to make, and how are we going to make those? Even if you had a, one of my concerns, I thought we should have moved, I thought, I supported what the board was trying to do, but my concern was, we're going to build a $30 million building and not be able to staff it and not be able to manage it. So those concerns haven't gone away, and so that's the, you know, sort of the, in my opinion, that's the elephant in the room. That has to be solved along with the building situation.
Yeah, it seems, yeah, all of that is, is essential to the conversation. It seems to me that the board, despite best intentions and good reasoning, lost a lot of trust with that revote. And I think the first step is regaining that trust, and like you said, I think even for the board to have some consensus and understanding where we all are on the issue, but probably starting with some of the easier fact-based questions that were unanswered and why people voted no, that have to do with surveys and have to do, again, accumulating that information before you get to the biggest questions about the long-term operations, the financials, the practicalities, the, the location. And I think it's possible to look at it without specifying a location. I think that the, it seems, and having read through the work group findings and talking to various people, that before we even get to what our options are with model and location, we have to answer, if we were to move it, what would we do with the existing location? And if we don't move it, what are we going to do with the residents? And those seem to be two major issues that I think put any other decision we make into context, and will also help us start to narrow things down. But I think if we don't start picking it apart, building trust back, and then tackling the bigger ones, then we're not going to, we're not going to get anywhere, and we're just going to be putting a lot of money into an old building. just going to be putting a lot of money into an old building.
There were two work groups.
Yeah, the building and the...
So there was, so there's lots of minutes to review.
And 2013. And I will say that I was...
No, there were contemporaneous work groups working at the same time on this project.
The building one and then the other work group, that, just the regular, and I did, I went through some of the older records from 2013 and 2007 and was discouraged that, I thought, it's a matter of site model and costs, and that's almost a direct quote from Patty Rogavine in 2007. So I think in the name of trying to figure out how to move forward, it is about taking a step back or it's a death by a thousand cuts, which I don't think is inevitable, but if we don't have a conversation, it will be.
I wasn't trying to bring that conversation, but I was just trying to give Rick a shout out for being right, but...
I spent a lot of time thinking about this, getting more gray hairs lately.
I mean, the board unanimously supported building a new first-class facility in a small house model. And there are many reasons why the board unanimously supported that. But there were, there were questions that were still out there. We have been talking about putting this on an agenda very soon, trying to readdress it, been somewhat trying to regroup on the best approach because there's obviously, meanwhile, the repairs aren't even going as smoothly as we had hoped because of, because the funding comes in more expensive.
So when we do talk about it, and, you know, I go back and forth on whether we should talk about it or not because, you know, just going back to what Patty said 10 years ago, I mean, not much, I mean, things have changed, but that's, the conundrum of the, of the three pieces remains. And, and there are so many voices out there. So I, we have all the, we have a lot of information, and what it takes is some, I think, some courage to take a position and, and stick to it, so...
Yeah. It seems like it may be helpful because we have to do a good recap of everything with the two new board members and have a bit of a, maybe workshop-style discussion to see what we're all thinking. But this is getting a little bit beyond the scope of what the agenda item was.
And I mentioned to Libby, perhaps getting Toby, that group, to come and do exactly that, give a baseline for what, all the stuff we're referring to in terms of the model or the financials, that's the consultant. Now, they ended up firing us because of our lack of a bunch of stuff, specifically the concerns over, well, I don't want to go into it now, but, so they, you know, whether they come back and will agree to talk to us again, we don't know, but they're, they know everything that, so...
Okay.
The other, the other thing that sticks out to me is some of these issues are huge issues, and we're still sort of, we're sort of reactive to things instead of proactive. And it's difficult because there's, you know, sometimes things like Tom Nevers, someone else's desire becomes our desire, and then we're supposed to do it for them. And so, you know, these, some of these things, we have to find a way to prioritize, something like this, or the landfill, or whatever, and keep it the top, and find a way to politely keep some of the things that are second or third tier behind this away. And it's very difficult. I mean, that's, you know, sort of why we're trying to do a strategic plan to figure out, how do we, you know, how do we as a group and how do we as a government prioritize the most important aspect, issues, and put the others to the side? Don't put the important ones that are difficult to decide, you know, tackle those, maybe a bite at a time, but find a way to tackle them. And I think that's, we're under a lot of pressure, and with fewer town employees than 15 years ago, and a lot more work and a lot more pressure, and I think sometimes we're, these things become the result of that, but...
Yeah.
And there were some things we purposely didn't address and didn't have any intention to, and that needed to be put off. For example, the new model creates all new job descriptions. Each one of those needs to be negotiated with the unions. And we hadn't even, you know, had a plan, you know, so that was, that was a other, so... And that, that's a huge, in and of itself, is a huge matter.
Yeah. And I think it was just a big ask. And I think anytime you're looking for community buy-in on something that involves big change, significant costs, the outreach is, I mean, it's almost unfathomable, but it's, you know, it's high risk of failure if there's not enough outreach and not getting consensus somewhere along the way.
There's a little bit, back to something more in line with this agenda item, that I, I think there's a little bit of a lack of understanding on all of the things that we're up against with the level of disrepair that the building is in and the level of how outdated it is and working around people who are living there, living there 24/7. And it's, I just don't know if anybody fully grasped when they were thinking about moving the facility, all of the issues that we're dealing with trying to keep it running where it is. And it will be interesting what it, when we do this determination of need, what new parameters may come up that will really challenge us even more.
We asked for a waiver of room size from the first day it was opened, and I didn't know that until I read all the stuff a year or two ago. So we've, sort of, we've been, we've been banging against it from the day we opened it, so...
I respectfully just want to say, I was the chair of the committee, the second committee, that was originally asked to look at it as a, really from a buildability question. And the one thing I had learned, and I don't disagree with you that the public needed more, the reality, though, the town, the selectmen, Libby, Rachel, had had repeated, I come to these meetings nonstop, ad nauseam, sections done on reimbursement, sections done on DPH and new regulation, sections done on unions. What I learned going through the process, and candidly, I think Jim will admit, it became overwhelming, it became a full-time job for me for almost 90 days, I would say more than a full-time job, was how complicated and how this touched literally, and I've done a lot of projects, I've never had a project that touched so many complicated issues. And I don't know that even more time would have made people more comfortable because they end up focusing very quickly on their emotion rather than any of the facts. And so we were trying to get them back to the critical facts. Right after the floods that we've recently had around the country, I've gotten 10 emails from people who didn't believe what I was saying before, which was, you have to realize there'll be a day when that storm surge hits, and people said emotionally, no, it won't. I spent my life in emergency planning. The reality is, those sort of surges do come, and how do you want to plan for them? So people who didn't want it picked something they didn't, because they didn't want to deal with this. It is so complicated. It touches unions, it touches those folks in the home, it touches families, it touches the land use issue. There's nothing else on the island that touches as many things as this did. So I agree, I wish we had had more time. At the same time, I don't know how you take something this complicated and actually keep people's interest for what would be a four-hour discussion to go through all the facts, and that would be dumbing down what you read just to get your head wrapped around it. So it's a complicated problem just to educate people on it.
Yeah. And it seems like something that has to be picked apart and focused on individually because it is such a complex issue. And my only concern is that if we all say, well, we did the best we could, then we're saying, that's it, we're just going to keep trying to fix an old building. And I think that maybe more time with the same approach wouldn't have any, had any effect. So we've got to change the approach of how we get public buy-in because the approach that was taken didn't work. And if we think we can do better, then we have to look at it and figure out what could be another approach, but...
I mean, now I'm recalling that there were, there were people who, when given the facts from the Army Corps of Engineers, said, "That's not true." So it's hard, I don't, I didn't know where to go with that.
And I could be critical, but the town did, did a really good job on this. This is one of the, you know, some of the best work that I've seen the town do in 20 years was on this project. And I think that's, you know, that's always part of what was difficult in the whole process. And it'll be difficult going forward, you know? But I think, you know, hopefully, people are realizing that this, that we're, you know, we're putting a million or $2 million a year into a building, and it's substandard, and it's, you know, it's not ideal for the residents, and if we're going to even be able to stay in the business, we're going to have to do something different. And maybe people will be more receptive now because they're going to see what a difficult situation we're heading into.
Yeah.
So...
I could pick any topic, and we could spend an hour every board meeting for the rest of this year, and we wouldn't touch all the topics. Reimbursement, it's an art, a science, and candidly, changing every day. That's just an example, right? So if you want to build anything, stay in the business, you have to know how to fund it. All of the various things that happen in union contracts would be a whole nother set of questions. But the reality is for these, stay in these businesses, we have to do something different with our workforce to be able to survive. That's a very, again, emotional issue, is, does view count over quality? Right? That, I don't even know how to prove that one. But, you know, to Jim's point about the Army Corps, so we went off and hired some people, did our own surveys, and had it independently reviewed, trying to bring credibility, and it was just a credibility question.
To the Army Corps of Engineers.
I mean, to the fact that every person we talked to in every way you could approach it. And so when you get done, I look forward to any ideas you have about how, because I offered to Libby, if I could help again, I would gladly put some energy into try to figure out how to bubble through all these questions. But they're complicated. And in fairness to us, then we go to town meeting, and we're given seven to 10 minutes to present what would take me four to six hours if you were to come to something and I wanted to present it.
Yeah.
And candidly, I'd fall asleep after the first 20 minutes, so we'd have to have several people stepping up afterwards, because they're complicated, boring issues. A lot of them are boring, but they're complicated. Never touched anything in your time in the selectmen, I guarantee you this, in five years, you'll say to us, "I've never got involved in anything that had this many technicals."
But Rita, I agree with you, we need a, we need a different approach because, well, so, and I'd be certainly open to hearing what your thoughts or Jason's thoughts are as new members on how to approach it, so...
So why don't we put it on an agenda coming up for a more specific discussion about moving forward and what that's going to look like?
Okay.
Okay. And please let me know if there's any particular information that you'd want to have. I can certainly ask the consultants if they'd want to come back. I would not be optimistic about that.
We can talk about it next...
Getting back to Rita's initial question about why was there only one bid? Not to answer for Brian, and he may have more to say about this, but I think what we're seeing is that we're not getting tons of bids for some of our projects. It all depends on what the project is. This is a somewhat of a specialized project. It's going to take some real care and, and extra this and that to deal with, basically working in someone's living space. So it may be that. There's a lot of work out there right now, and it's a lot of work on Nantucket, but it's a lot of work elsewhere where it's not so hard to get to. So that's probably another reason why the bids came in, why the bid came in higher than we had expected, so, it's a reality here, especially with a project like this.
And they know that, at this point, people know that they're busy and they have us kind of over a barrel a little bit, so, it's not...
Okay. I think we'll move on to the next now.
Okay, the next item is an update on the downtown sidewalk improvement project, phase one. Chuck Larson, our deputy DPW director, is going to give us a quick overview. We're about to start this project, and if you recall, about a year ago, the board, I'm going to use the word "demand," demanded that this project start this fall, and we are starting the project this fall.
Good evening, everyone. The Department of Public Works is pleased to announce the start of the downtown sidewalk project. Construction will begin mostly, most likely toward the end of next week, and that's after a recent, today, conversation with a contractor. This important project includes the widening of the existing sidewalks and relaying the entire brick surface along the following locations. The north side of Straight Wharf from Easy Street to New Whale Street. The east side of Easy Street from Straight Wharf to the newly placed bulkhead at Easy Street. And the total project length is 620 feet. Once completed, the sidewalk widening will provide approximately eight feet of new travel surface for the pedestrians through the corridor. Our contractor will install sidewalk detours to safely control pedestrian traffic around the work zone. One lane of traffic for cars and trucks will be maintained throughout construction. The contractor will maintain access to all businesses as work progresses. We understand that there will be some inconvenience to our residents and visitors. The DPW greatly appreciates everyone's patience while we construct these needed improvements. And if you have any questions, please feel free to call our office.
We are doing some outreach to the property owners and the businesses in front of which this repair project is going to be happening. There will be some construction going on during stroll, so there's no getting around it.
We'll try to minimize the impact as best we can.
And I'm not particularly worried about these. These are not sidewalks that are parked on or driven on particularly, but if there's a way to put a base in there so when they are driven on, they don't sink the very next day, that would be great.
So we're going to use a newer design that's going to use a geotextile fabric between the gravel base and the sand bedding for the bricks. That will reduce the infiltration of the sand into the gravel. It'll provide stability across the entire mat, and that should improve the durability and longevity of the sidewalks. Tree roots are still going to be a concern for those areas, but we'll cut out and improve the tree...
But they're not, these are not being designed to park on or drive on.
Correct.
So once we do it, we, we had better hope that nobody does that. That's my, you know, my concern.
Because your point's well-taken. It would be a different design to put wheel loadings on it on a regular basis, so...
Will we need reverse truck route, Erica, for anything?
No, it should only be possibly one lane.
We'll have one lane open at all times, very similar to when we did the crosswalks. So we had good success with that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Okay, selectmen's reports and comments. Update on Harbor Place project.
This is an update on the harbor from, really coming from the Harbor Place work group. On the work group, we have Dawn and Jim from the Board of Selectmen, we have Barry and Linda from the planning board, we have town administration and staff as needed, and we have Andrew and his staff as needed. So this is an update meant to really come from them. The very first slide, I always like to start with this, just it's, this stroll down what the site has been. When you look at the site, I think a lot of people sometimes forget, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide, but if you look on the far left, that's in the 1930s, and you can see how the site evolved over time. Tanks were brought together. In the 50s, there was coal gasification on the property, a lot of different things that happened down there. And eventually, there was a power plant that was later taken away. We look at the site, and again, really for people just coming back up to speed, generally speaking, as you, you look at the site down at the number six is the substation that feeds the island. Number seven is, for just a small point of history, is a building built in 1899. It was the original power plant. I always say, number eight is our, is an old country store for those people who've been here for as long as I have. Two is the stop and shop, the fuel farm is number three, and number one is the parking lot. And that just makes up the site. The site's a little over four-plus acres. There are four, there are three practical owners. It's Nantucket Electric Company, it's Winthrop, and it's New England Development. Remain, as you remember, was part of this program because when we first started, we thought the property across the street on Candle Street may be part of this overall discussion, and their role is changing into something a little bit different. So one of the things I thought to put this in context so you understand the ask at the end is to understand from my vantage point how this has really been going on for a significant period of time. I gave each of the selectmen a picture, and this picture, I just thought was interesting, it was worth going back... It was worth going back to 1995, and I had been in a discussion at the time with Timmy Sabarino on the board and Arthur DeRoscher, and what we were doing was straightening out a lot of old title issues, straightening out who owned Old Whale Street and New Whale Street, and as part of that, we had looked at this concept of a part of the property to be made available for some type of transportation improvement. And, so that discussion for these kinds of activities down there go all the way back to 1995 and 1996. The really first step for the Nantucket Electric Company piece, though, was when we did the submarine cable. That allowed us to close the power plant. A few years later, we got rid of the power plant, 97 to 2000, got rid of the tanks, got rid of all of the other products that are on the property. Just before the merger in 1995, we began remediation. We spent almost 20 years now and have remediated the site. By remediation, we, I mean, National Grid has cleaned up the site in such a manner that it can be reused for the majority of things that we would consider. The remediation comes with some very limited restrictions and really with the activities below ground and how they get managed, which is consistent with these kinds of sites. In 2012, one of the interesting things that I thought Bruce Miller did was he convinced National Grid to let you folks experiment with valet parking, which just drove the very simple concept that people would pay for, you know, in ease to know where they could park. So that's, again, one element of this, this site is Nantucket Electrics, and so over the last 20 years, these are the kinds of things that have occurred. Harbor Fuel and the Tank Farm, as everybody knows, in 199, in 1985, there was a very first study done at the idea that something had to change. In 89, Libby, I think it was, in 95, again, in 98, there would have been various town groups put together to look at what do we do with the tank farm downtown and where would we put it? But it really gained ground in 2015 when Libby put together an RFP and brought VHB in, and they, they eventually came up with a recommendation to relocate it out to the airport. That turned into an RFP, that RFP has been awarded, and as you know, in full disclosure, I, I got hired by Harbor Fuel about two months ago to help them do the permitting, licensing, and design. That process is underway, and we remain pretty optimistic that with licenses in hand, we hope by the end of Q1 in 2018, that we will be constructing by the end of 2018, and that tank farm will be closed in 2019 as planned. So again, that piece of property is getting positioned to be able to start thinking about the future. The town's been talking about this, everything from 20 years ago, looking at the tank farm, but really, I think, more importantly, probably starting about eight or nine years ago, when Wilkes Square was introduced, and what came out of that later became a series of additional studies done by the planning board, where they looked at the design of parking garages, they looked at parking downtown. There are four to five traffic flow studies that the town had done. There'd been several votes taken by this board to support things like improved transportation downtown, improved pedestrian access. There's been a host of things that have been voted on by the town. I think the biggest action they took then was to form this joint committee I just talked about, and that joint committee was meant to work with this group of owners to look at what might potentially come out of a, out of a partnership, if you will, between the owners and the town. The owners watched what the town had done, and with Wilkes Square in particular, and I put down 2015 is when they got together as a group, but starting in 2013, at various times, they reached out to me and asked, you know, what are the possibilities that would, you know, we could do something together? And eventually, it grew into a group where the owners get together, I represent those folks, and we went through a process where we evaluated what the town had done. We found that the majority of the work they had done was, was valid and, and the good basis for what to do with the property. And, you know, we developed this idea of it only works if we do it with the town as a partner. And so we presented an idea. The idea was presented this time last year. I'll spend just a split second going around it, but, but what you really realize is we believe the land, the value downtown starts with making the experience better for the folks that visit the island, for the folks who use the island. It's everything for pedestrian access, it's bike access, it is thinking about how the shuttles work in the area, it's thinking about how the tour buses work, where the taxis sit, how they queue, where do you park, and eventually, how that all interfaces with things like the NRTA. If you had asked me just a year ago, I would have said to you that the expression that I learned to hate when they were doing Wilkes Square was this expression called the intermodal transportation center. I thought that was a glorified word for a bunch of hippies or someone other than me. What I've grown to realize is you can explain every time what intermodal means, and no one really wants to hear it, but it's taking all of your transportation issues and bringing them together in one place and finding a common plat for them, platform for them to be able to expand and improve. And so the reality is, I find many people, when they talk about this project, will say to me, "Why are you building a garage?" And I keep saying, "We're not building a garage. We're, we're after this discussion about this intermodal transit discussion." That really is what we think is critical as a group of owners, and I think our work group has come to fully agree that that is what we're talking about. So we brought the plan to the town. We did go through a series of public outreaches. I did that with Mike Burns. We went to everything from Rotary Civic League, to a series of citizens groups, to the chamber, to various town committees. And so we got out there and did not get negative reaction. What we got was questions about what is all the information the town, you think, will need to be able to make an informed decision? And so we brought that feedback back, and working with this group, have come back with the reality that we needed a consultant. The town needed someone to help them validate and explore all of the different components that, and information that they need to be able to make a good decision. And so we outlined the scope of work, focusing on this component related to the intermodal transportation center and the improvements in the general site-related area. And we ended up going through a process where we interviewed a series of people, in particular, two large firms that we're gonna talk about in, in a little bit. And we, we had a very specific discussion about what do we need to accomplish so that the town feels comfortable, that they've, they've got the base information to evaluate what we call an opportunity. This is what we're really presenting to the town, is this, this idea that there's a chance here to make something better. So when you looked at the scope of work that we put together, it's, it's about design opportunities, it's about functional opportunities, it's really about building a financial model so you can evaluate how to operate it, who should own it. It includes a discussion about things like, how might you build it to be flexible in the future? How might it change when technology gets introduced five, 10, or 15 years down the road? How do you design it so it has the ability to be slightly repurposed? So we went through this interview process, and then we got back some responses. And the responses really came back from the two companies we talked to, which were Walker and Desmond. They're both large firms that focus on a lot of this type of work, and they're, we really thought that was actually a key issue for us. We wanted someone big enough that as this grows and expands with the hope that it continues to be talked about, that they could keep up with all aspects that might be put in front of them. And so these two folks in particular had real experience related to what we were analyzing. We ended up going with Desmond because candidly, during the interview, they really seemed to be able to demonstrate an understanding of all the needed steps that the town needs to go through, really a little bit, you know, your, your, your point, Rita, about our island home. People are gonna need to go through steps to understand that all things were vetted. And they, they seemed to have a very logical process for bringing people through all of the things that they thought were relevant. And, so they, they ultimately were able to convince us of, you know, their, their relevance in this. But also, they had had relevance with some work they did in Plymouth, some work they did in Newbury, where they had been in towns which were very historic, towns that had a very seasonal nature to the, the swing and the uses that were going on. So they, they seemed very, very much the right choice. So as you think about our recommendation, which is going to be that you move forward with a Desmond over Walker, we thought it was also helpful for you to understand the general timeline that we think we're looking at. Our hope here is that they will get brought aboard within a week of us moving forward with this discussion, that during the first, the last quarter of this year, they will deliver all of, and prepare all of the analysis related to the cost model. They'll come up with a series of design options and how they're affected by the various components that you may build into these, like height or number of parking spaces, various uses that you might want to incorporate. They'll come back and they'll work with us on all of the elements related to public outreach. I think Libby's gonna talk in a few minutes at the end. The town has been thinking about public outreach. I think it's important for the board to know that, and I think it's important for people who are listening tonight, that she has a very proactive plan to, to start a public outreach program with us, so to aid the, the consultants in getting to not just the department heads in the town and not all of the key stakeholders, but the citizens at large. The goal here is by the end of the year for them to give you a presentation summarizing what they have found to date, and then work with the town throughout 2018 to start to develop, if you start to buy into the fact that this can happen, that the potential is real, that the opportunity is real, that they would start to put together the things that the town may need to get comfortable with, some actions we hope you consider for the annual town meeting in 2018. I also want to point out very quickly, this consultant is, would be funded by gift from the three owners, so there is no cost to the town for this particular phase. And what we're looking for here is that the board supports our finding, that, that they understand that one of the things that we think has to happen, starting in the first quarter of 2018, once they have the finding, is to start to put together the outline of how this might become an agreement between the owners and between the community. You can call it an MOU, you can call it an owners agreement, and that would be meant to address things like, what might the timing look like, what are the roads, the street layouts of it? It's, it's, how, how might we finance the different components of it? How much land is needed for the intermodal facility? Where would it be located on the facility? How would we transfer that to the town? Those kinds of details. At town meeting, what we're really hoping to get to are some basic zoning questions. We need to start to send a message to the owners that the town's willing to talk about how zoning plays a role for them to be able to come up with a way to make all of this work for them. And it seems reasonable that it could be put in place in a way that it's linked to taking action within an MOU. So it's, it becomes this movement down the road, but it's a first step in what is a, a long road. And so our recommendation to this group is that you say yes to the gift that we're offering to pay for the consultant, and that you move forward with Desmond so we can get on with exploring the opportunity. A lot said quickly.
Thank you.
Sounds good. I know Barry Rector's here, he's part of the, part of the team, too. I just add, you know, just a couple of comments. Both very qualified consultants. Desmond seemed to be the consensus of the group, or, I don't know, down-to-earth, pragmatic, easier to work with, not that the others weren't, but it seemed to just be a better fit for our community. And, you know, looking back, we've, we've been meeting for about a year now, I guess, and, so, so I'm, I'm happy to, you know, bring this as a recommend, you know, I think we're all happy to ask, answer your questions, but hopefully gain your support for it tonight.
Yeah, so Jim and I have obviously been in this the whole time, but we're able to answer any questions. We need two actions, one accepting the gift and one officially hiring Desmond to move forward with the study.
That's correct.
I just have one quick question.
Yeah?
Is, do, does any of the scope review take into account sort of the existing parking issues that we have going on, like looking at the feasibility or the, I suppose just the feasibility, how it will impact some of the parking issues we already have? And any recommendations, or is there any sort of review of anything beyond just the, the parking garage itself in the bigger picture of parking?
That is something that we probably need to talk about further as a board, on whether we want to have another study or to revisit some of the studies that have already been done in regard to comprehensive parking throughout the town. We're trying to keep this focused to the actual Harbor Place project and how the intermodal facility would integrate into that, and not go too far out from that with the, they're gifting us the funding to work on this particular piece of it, but it may be something that we want to do concurrently.
I think it would be, I think it would be valuable, and even very, very much in terms of looking at the feasibility of even a project like this and then the impacts, and it's something that we need to address.
I, I think it'd be smart to, to add that in. This, this probably is a great idea, but it forces us to talk about so many other things, parking, traffic. So you answered, there's a question I was gonna have, so this is just for this specific building and the cost and how it's designed?
And recommendations on how to manage it and how to get grants and all of the different components to make this particular facility function.
But, and I'll, I'll wade in, I think, you know, sort of, one of the things, I'm on the Desmond site, one of the things they do, development of transportation demand management programs. That's, that's what we're talking about. People aren't gonna use a, you know, they aren't gonna pay to use a parking garage if the parking on the street is free. And, and everybody thinks that someone else is gonna, you know, be inconvenienced except themselves, depending who it is, and so I just think that that's, from day one, I've said, that has to be part and parcel of this, or, and I don't know how you would financially model a garage right now, you know, I guess you'd model it under our existing parking scheme, and then why would anyone go in? You know? So, so I think that, that is to be part of this, part of this somehow. And I, and I agree wholeheartedly with the design. I don't know what the zoning changes will be, and that'll be a whole nother discussion, but I, I think the design is great, I think the owners, you know, coming together is great, I think it's a unique opportunity, but I think we've gotta take care, we've gotta take care of everything else. So how do we, as a board, we have to figure out how do we do that part?
I, I think the, the concern certainly for the group is, I, and I'm gonna speak probably more candidly than I might normally. I, I don't know how the group takes on responsibility to look at that, that bigger picture. We've tried to even, you know, by looking at the sidewalks and the access to and from the site, we've tried to build some interest in, in what, what those improvements could be. I, I would think that we certainly don't think it's our responsibility or in candidly any way our right to try to figure out how to solve parking in the broader whole area of downtown Nantucket. Do I think it can be done in parallel with this? I think this is a first step. I do think they can do a certain amount of modeling. It won't surprise me when they do their modeling that they say, "The modeling will get better as you develop a, a more comprehensive, widespread program." I do think they can do some things, and I think the indication would be, I, I think we don't really understand our summer residents. This is, again, my opinion of what I've read. If we're not sure, you look at the valet parking, there's now a line to pay $20 to park in valet parking, and, and people don't have to do that, but people on vacation are willing to pay a premium for convenience. How does that spread throughout town? I, I don't know. I, I know that, that the project by itself, you know, needs to get some indication that the community's interested in this, and, and if they have to wait for you to solve every parking problem in town, I, I don't know how that really works out. But I do think the town will probably get to a place where they think about doing some of this in parallel.
So it was hard for me to, because you toggle back and forth between, are we solving all the parking problems of the town, or are we working on a development project called Harbor Place, and there's an, and then, and then this whole concept of intermodal, but so it took some discipline on my part to remember that this is a development project, and the people that are, you know, working on that are just working at as, as a defined development project. There's a whole piece over here that's the town responsibility, which is parking. And that's, you know, that's another, that's a whole other strategy and groups and thinking that's not really within the scope of the developers who want to develop this site.
So parking in general is something I'm happy to discuss and bring, bring back for discussion. I know it's come up numerous times in the past. There's a lot of other community concerns that play into it that, you know, could take a long time to address. This particular project, I see as, I see as a great opportunity for the town, and we're at a point in time where the three owners- point in time where the three owners of this large parcel in the heart of our downtown by our waterfront are willing to work with us.
And with each other.
With each other. And, you know, most private people aren't going to wait forever for the town to move like government tends to move. So I think we can do some stuff in parallel. I don't want to see this get so bogged down with trying to solve every parking issue in the entire community that we can't make a decision on this, because I think we need to bring some things forward for a town meeting to see if the broader community besides this board supports it.
But the folks at Desmond, they do that stuff too, and I'm sure as we go through this process, we can say, you know, we can identify issues, we can ask them how we might address them, just as an aside to the whole conversation about a parking garage or intermodal center.
It's sort of interesting, if in fact the parking garage was going to be owned by this entity, and, you know, if it was the three owners who were going to own the parking garage and responsible for it, that would be one thing, but what we're talking about is the town, and I think it's a great opportunity as well, but it's the town who's going to own the parking garage. We have to make sure that it's modeled properly and that we, you know, can, that it's a positive for the town. I think it will be done properly, but, you know, and I've done, I've read a lot of, you know, I'm kind of a geek about this, I like reading about the traffic stuff. I went to the Walker page, and then that drove me to some other stuff last night, and, you know, we've sort of bypassed, you know, sort of on-street parking meters and everything else. Now people are doing things with GPS, and they know when your car's parked there and you get a bill. And so there's things in that, and that's what they're recommending to people now, because that's the easiest way to do it. It's license plate driven and it's GPS driven. And so there's certain things that we could be doing, but I'm afraid that people are going to vote for this all for their own reason. The neighbors are going to think that they're going to park in front of their house again. The workers downtown are going to think that they get to park in front of their desk and that the, you know, and everyone's going to think the rich people are going to drive in and pay for this every day. The guys who take the votes every day are going to think they get to park in the parking garage for $100 a summer and park all day. So we have to figure out what really is going to happen and how is it going to interact with everything else so that we can make an intelligent, informed decision on whether we, you know, how we go forward with the garage as a town entity. And I think, so my suggestion would be to do that stuff in tandem with this. I don't want to lose the opportunity, I don't want to see this not happen, but I also don't want to see this happen and everything else stay the same downtown. You know, there has to be, we have to value parking and we have to deal with it. And so I'm a broken record, I've been saying it for 20 years, but...
You know, and Matt, I would just say to your point, I don't disagree in many ways, but I would say that I think that as Desmond goes through this process, any professional goes through this process, they're going to identify where more policy or more answers would improve their model, and I think they'll bring you to what are those next questions and what are the next things you want to think about as a board, and what are the next policies you need to address so some of our assumptions work. And so I think in some cases, they're going to present probably support for the need. I think to Dawn's point, the question is when does this board start talking about it? Right now or in two months? Or do you wait for the first round of reports from these folks, which could be back as early as three months from now? I think that's the question for the board to wrestle with.
And what the issues you're bringing up are going to have an impact on the financial feasibility, so without, you know, without, you know, it's just hypothetical, but he could come back to us and say, well, you got to fix those three things over here, or you're not going to, this won't work. So, but that's...
They could, except consultants tend to give you the answer that you want, you know, they tend to, not always.
I think we're a pretty...
No, I understand, and the other point about it is town meeting's going to be here pretty quick. And so if we don't in tandem do this, then I, you know, some of these questions that I have, I'm not the only one that has them, other people will have, and we could be in a situation where at town meeting asking for votes that people aren't ready to take because they still have questions. So I just think the more we can get a handle on it, even if it's just to the point of, yes, we have to adopt a man manager, and here's sort of the way we should do it, these are the next steps, at least we could answer it. If we said, well, we haven't really looked at that yet, they said we should do it, but we don't really do things like that, we won't get there.
Well, some of the things that are being discussed for town meeting really, the changing it to CDT makes all the sense in the world and I believe was planned anyway, because the zoning currently is not consistent with the master plan.
Right, we're the only site left that is not consistent with the master plan.
So that's really not hinging on whether this garage even happens, intermodal center. So as far as what's going before town meeting, just my point is that that doesn't necessarily have to hinge on doing this particular portion of the project.
And one of the reasons we picked Walker and Desmond to talk to was, it's certainly my belief that over time, there'll be many legs to this discussion and that can grow. And, you know, if they're aboard in a couple of weeks, one of the things that we're asking them to do is meet with key stakeholders early, and certainly boards of, the Board of Selectmen is a key stakeholder. And you folks amongst yourselves can talk about if you want them to do additional work beyond the scope of this and the timing of that. But we were careful to pick someone who could, that wouldn't say, no, we don't do that. If you want to study that, here's how we do that, and here's what we would need from you to move forward with that.
Yeah, they were both very impressive.
I think this is a great opportunity, and I'm for it, and I'll vote for it. I really think we need to do something, pun intended, in tandem. It's an opportunity to solve some of our issues, it's kind of going to force us, year-round transportation, performance parking. So I would be willing to dig into the work group, you know, and I don't think we have to figure it out by this summer, I think we have time, but we should do it in tandem.
Yeah, I would echo Matt and Jason, I think we maximize the benefit of a gift by doing things in parallel, and even more so because we move so slowly, and this is development-driven if we want to be able to keep pace and make decisions that happen at a similar pace as opposed to years after. I think figuring out how to do something in parallel.
And, you know, just another thought is maybe we want to sponsor something for town meeting to create a parking commission.
Yep.
That can focus, you know, maybe it's, we've been talking about it, I know we were asking the government study to look at it, but maybe we just want to go for it.
Because it's, I mean, it's a huge...
And create a commission that's going to focus completely on parking issues.
And I don't know where this sits on here, but this, to me, this is, this conversation about parking is another reason to have year-round bus service. So we should move on that.
Yes.
Thanks. I appreciate your acknowledgement, I really do. Barry Rector, the vice chair of the planning board at this point. So I know this is never an easy issue to discuss, but I will tell you, and Dave hit a primary nail on the head, there's been so many discussions and studies that have been taking place since roughly 1996, and there's a lot of incredibly good information in there. The questions I hear you starting to vet tonight have been vetted, okay? You need to go back in time to understand what some of those things are. So it's not, to me, it doesn't make sense to keep recreating the wheel trying to find a new answer when you've already got a lot of answers that are sitting before you. We've really thought long and hard about this. When we look at the garage, for instance, we've talked about not necessarily a standard garage, but something that has re-adaptive use to it. When we've looked at the downtown area, when we talk about zoning, we've talked about phasing RRC 2, one of the most lenient zoning parameters that are out there and trying to make it more conforming by changing it over to CDT. Catch me at any point if I'm off target here, please. I would really ask you to support this at this point. It is an important concept, it really is. You are being, through some incredible generosity, a door is being opened for us at this point. And it's up to us to really kind of guide that process through. But a set of stakeholders like this as well could just as easily say, we're just going to file conventional plans at this point, do what we would need to do, thank you very much, have a nice day. But instead, they've opened a very unique door for us. The opportunity is there. And now all of a sudden, again, you're going to have the ability to be part of what that destiny is for the downtown area. And that's such an important thing. And we can weigh things back and forward about how useful a garage is, how unuseful it is, you know, I hear arguments like it'll never be used. Ah, boy, I don't want to tie up your time. But if you're not clear on these issues, you know, I'd certainly suggest you can grab any one of us on the planning board who have been through this stuff or the planning commission. I know Andrew would be happy to have these conversations with you as well, too. You're asking good questions, but please understand. So tonight, I would urge you once again, please, really consider accepting these gifts, going with, and I know Dave has worked very hard to vet who he thought would be a really good, you know, set of consultants for this. They actually went with the higher-priced model.
We did.
Which I thought was fantastic. You don't hear that much often, but that's a really good thing. But here's your opportunity to shape the destiny of what's going to start to happen down there at this point. Please consider taking a very active role in it. I for one say, yeah, let's do it. Thanks for listening.
I'll be ready for a motion. I'd be happy to make, the first motion is to accept the gift.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Second motion is to choose Desmond as the parking consultant, or the intermodal centered consultant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chairman, I just wanted to follow up a little bit with some of the public outreach items that Dave mentioned. We've, he and I have also discussed, and I've discussed with some of you, the need for a town representative to help see this project through and be a contact person with the consultant and other people in the community and other town boards and things. And Janet Schulte and I, the director of Culture and Tourism, and I have discussed whether or not that's something that she, in her capacity as the director, could take on, and she believes that she can do that. Thank you, Janet. And she and Dave and I met yesterday morning to go over what sorts of things that we could get started working on, and we thought we could probably be able to come back next week with an overview of some of the public outreach ideas with some timelines that we've talked about for the consultant and other groups that Janet would be reaching out to, including town departments, which are going to be a critical part of this process. We wondered, too, if the board would like to meet the consultant. We were maybe going to try to get them, the principal person here, next week, if you think that would be valuable, we can work on that. And sort of maybe outlining some of the other steps that we've been talking about internally. There's going to be a need for some legal assistance for the town, so I will be talking to town council about that. There are going to be these, the need for the warrant articles, so that's in the hands of planning at the moment. Coordination with other town departments and agencies. And then I have heard quite a bit from each of you individually as well about a concurrent process perhaps about the parking plan for the downtown, and maybe that's some, maybe that's an upcoming workshop or meeting item. Because I agree with Barry, we don't need to reinvent the wheel here, there are any number of studies about this, and maybe the transportation planner can put together for us an inventory of what they are. We've had any number of work groups already look at all of this. It's, if we want to have a parking plan that's going to hopefully integrate with a transportation facility that has a parking garage component to it, then we are going to need some kind of a plan for the downtown. Otherwise, it isn't probably going to be very feasible for the town to operate a parking garage successfully or that component of it, because there are, as Dave mentioned, other very valuable parts to the trans, the intermodal aspect of this facility, it's not just a parking garage. And it is an exciting opportunity for that the town is being given, and if we don't take advantage of it, we're probably going to be sorry later. So we need to be thinking all of these things through. So anyway, it's, I think the board just needs to sort of say, we're going to do paid parking or some, that's what it's going to be, it's going to be some form of that, we just need to decide what it is.
Well, frankly, I'd like, I'd like planning to put together a summary of
Sure.
all of the studies that have been done.
Or their recommendations.
See if there's anything that needs, I'm getting there, see if there's anything that needs to be updated because of more modern technologies that have come into play, and make a recommendation to us. I mean, it's, I think that that's where it should come from.
Not the expert.
You know, or make a couple of alternate recommendations.
Yeah, I think that might take a little bit of time to develop, because I think we need to incorporate departments like police and perhaps others that would be very involved in this and help develop a recommendation, but yeah, I think we can get working on that.
I think it's a little tougher question than paid parking or not, and I think we, that would be good to...
Well, for the, just for the next agenda meeting, I just sent a link to their, to the page, for Desmond's page, who talks about what they do here. I'm pretty aware of what we've done for studies and some of the things we've talked about, and the technology has, has changed leaps and bounds in the last three years, four years. And so I think, you know, and what is being recommended by these people now is different than what was recommended two years ago. So I really think, you know, I think we should be putting, we should be putting something out and having these guys tag that on, you know, and maybe handing, you know, get the recommendation from planning, get the studies for them to look at, because there's a lot of good stuff that would help them, but I think we should be getting their recommendation to go along with this for it to have the best chance of being successful. But I sent a link, we can talk about it and put it on the agenda.
Okay. All right, thank you, Dave.
Thank you so much.
Committee reports, I know Rita has something.
I do. So myself, Florencia from Public Outreach, Caitlin from Natural Resources, Roberto, Board of Health, Janet, we've been meeting and we've been working on putting together a, sorry, this fell off, so I think this is making a difference, putting together a page on the town website that summarizes and essentially provides a resource. I know, but I think without this, it makes it sharp and loud. Anyways, I'll just keep going. Okay. That will be a resource for people who want to know, an educational resource for what's going on regarding environmental initiatives on the island, who's doing what, and what you can do to get involved, as well as being a platform for action and promoting sustainability and stewardship. And we will be working on that, hopefully in the next month, the page will be ready. And in the meantime, sort of informally, our first campaign, last year, our last town meeting, I noticed a lot of plastic water bottles, and our focus at the moment is just talking about ways to reduce plastic pollution, reduce waste on the island, and so that we don't have to have plastic water bottles this year. We've got these that the town happened to have, and we want to ask all the town officials to either bring their own reusable bottles, and if they forget it or if they don't have one, the town already had these handy, so we all get one, and there'll be more available. Libby, you get one, thank you very much. There you go. All right, pass those down. So that's it. And if anyone has any thoughts on anything that could be added, I just have noticed a lot of people asking about what they can do about water quality, about plastic, about dump-related issues, and so we're just trying to provide that resource.
I would love to jump back in to the water bottle issue, plastic water bottles. So when I first opened up a cafe, I tried to put half plastic and half boxed waters better, so, right, you know, cartons of water, and I couldn't sell them. And I promoted them, and I tried, maybe it was too early, but if more people were doing it downtown on the island, maybe there's, maybe that's the way to do it, same with the straws.
Yep.
Well, we have, we have the benefit of having some of the best water in the world, just straight out of the tap here. And, I mean, one of the things I've been very impressed with, granted, they give it for free, but there's, one of the cafes in town has sparkling and straight water, and, you know, just maybe even we could have more stations around town.
And we actually do have quite a few already.
Would be viable to put in.
And that was one of the things we want to put, this little map on the page of where the refill stations are, because like you said, it's great water.
We have a great one in the town building, thank you, to the water company.
The boxed waters are actually less ecological. If you were actually breaking them apart and recycling them, which they do in some of couple of communities, then they're a better use, but here, they're not a better use. I looked into them, I had them, I had a pallet of them for a while, but...
Because of the digestion?
Well, no, because it's, they're three different pieces, there's like a plastic piece on the top, there's a metal lining, there's a box around the outside, so they sell them to you as this is the best thing ever. It's not plastic, but the embedded energy to produce it and the difficulty of recycling and reusing it makes it a lot worse situation. So when you actually dig into the common sense part of it, it looks good in theory and you're trying to sell you that, but it doesn't work. So, you know, so there's issues like that, which kind of, you know, it's complicated. you know, so there's issues like that, which kinda, you know, it, it's, it's complicated. And how does it fit the, you know, digester? There's no one here breaking them down. There's nowhere here to recycle them. They end up, you know, they end up on the, on the hill most likely.
But even if they disintegrated it thin air in five days, I couldn't sell them. I just couldn't. People didn't want them. They wonder what they were used to.
Yeah, they're used to the plastic water bottle.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it is changing. And there are so many fun water bottles out there now that it's a whole nother consumer product.
Town of Nantucket bottle being one of them.
Yes.
Board of Health met last week and kinda piggybacking on what Rita mentioned, how the Board of Health has really two areas of concern in their work. One is environmental and the other is community health. And as part of giving feedback to the staff last week on their strategic plan, we kind of felt comfortable or good about the environmental work that was being done. But it really felt, we needed a greater emphasis on the community health. So we asked them to go back and kinda create an emphasis for that or a conversation about it. And, and I think you'll see more, more of a emphasis on that in the coming months and years.
Great.
I had Capcom this morning, every, every Wednesday. We were two hours into Sewer Department capital request. And David Gray was very knowledgeable of everything. There's a lot of infrastructure issues that we have. And I, I think it went really well. We'll see how much, you know, fun that we have. Learning a lot on Capcom.
Okay. Someone might make a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I had one more thing. I just wanna make an announcement that it's the Finance Department's Director's Birthday today.
Oh, yes.
Happy birthday, Brian Turb.
Happy birthday, Brian.
Happy birthday, Brian.
You almost, you almost got out of here.
Yes.
Speaking of Brian, we, we did have Moody's Rating Agency Group here yesterday. Brian and Libby put together a great team of folks who presented to them. And our goal is to reach a AAA rating. And, you know, Dawn and I participated. And we'll get the results on Wednesday. But, you know, we, we certainly put on a very good show and they were, I think they walked away with a, a much better understanding of our island and the economic drivers of our community.
Just one last thing. Rita and I had the opportunity to go to an event on Monday for the weekend organization that Melissa Murphy and Jen Cohen started. And it is available on their Facebook page. We were just talking about the Articles for Town Meeting, so it just might be useful if anyone has questions. And also the Civic League is having a Meet the Articles this Saturday. I, I think it's from 1 to 3 here.
Yes.
Is that, okay. So, for other questions. Motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.